I'd like to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of November 4th, 2013, to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Need a motion to sit as a licensing board, please?
Sit.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Liquor license renewals, open a hearing on renewal for the following liquor licenses. Class A, Hopkinton Liquor Depot, Lynn Marie Finn, President of PLW Hopkinton, 229 Main Street, Ashway. Is the applicant present? Second is Village Place LLC, Edwin Russell, 999 Main Street, Hope Valley. Is the applicant present? Okay. Class B, V, Brick Oven Restaurant, Keith Knott, Mr. Knott, okay. Fenner Hill Country Club, Ron Levesque, okay. Lindbrook Golf Course, Joseph Colletti.
No, she's just been received.
Okay. And Lucky House Restaurant, I see Dan.
Hi, Danny.
Pavilion Steakhouse, George, okay. All right. Wood River Golf LLC, okay. Class B Limited, Main Street Pizza, Chris Holinsky?
Hunskey.
Hunskey. Thank you, Scott. Class D Full Privilege, Gordon Green Post Number 27, okay. And please, so all fees paid and notices posted?
The fees have been paid by all of them. I believe there was an error in the posting of the notice for Pavilion Steakhouse.
Okay, Judge? Sure.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. George Camoli, I represent Pavilion Steakhouse. We were attempting to transfer the existing license and create a new license. What has occurred when we transferred it from the Pavilion Restaurant to Frontier Road Properties, the prior owner has never obtained tax clearance. We're working under a conditional license and we can't get them to cooperate. So we're just going to ask tonight that it be renewed and we're going to ask for it to be re-advertized. We'll be rescinding the old license and issuing a new license to Mr. Raymond Quinlan, who's the owner of Frontier Road. Nothing's going to change, but we'll no longer be operating under a conditional license. So we'd request that it be renewed and we'll resubmit the application for a new license and rescind the old one.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. Anyone out there wishing to speak? On behalf of these licenses? Okay. Discussion.
Mr. Russell.
Oh, Mr. Russell.
Thank you for your time this evening. I just want to raise quickly the issue of fees. As you know, we were asked to pay $825 in addition to what we pay on property taxes. And then, of course, we have tip fees on top of that, which run $40 per person. So let's say we've got four people, that would end up as another $160. And then, the fire inspector is going to charge us $50 for that, which I'm having a little trouble understanding why. So the real fee is in excess of $1,000, not 825. So I just ask you to consider that as you think about going forward, what the aggregation of these fees are and what they mean to a small liquor store. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Yeah, it's certainly something to consider. I wasn't aware it was that high, so we'll figure it out going forward.
I think it's, I would like to point out that people have to realize that the town of Hopkinton is not involved in fire protection. We have independent fire districts, which are separate from town government, and they collect taxes and whatever, dealing with fire protection. I just think I should point that out. Thank you.
Can I make the motion to grant renewal to each license?
May I ask a question?
Sure, Dan.
What's the difference between BV and B Limited? Why would Main Street Pizza have to be a B Limited? Why wouldn't it be a BV? After all, serves alcohol in visuals or food.
Fixibles are different.
Okay, so Brick Oven serves beer, wine, and hot liquor? Okay, okay, fine.
Our motion, motion to grant renewal to each license, subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes current prior to issue.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion, folks?
The only thing is, and I don't know if...
We'll have discussion.
No, the only thing I have is the question which Attorney Camoli had mentioned mechanically, now last solicitor.
It's fine. They're just going to get a renewal tonight.
Okay.
And then, when he's ready, he'll refile as a new license. And relinquish the one that you renewed.
Okay, thank you.
And you want to exclude from this motion Lindbrook because they never filed their renewal application.
But you didn't bring them up earlier?
Okay. As long as it's clear, I'm fine.
To make it very clear, I'll amend it to exclude Lindbrook Golf Course.
Second.
I would also, I would also like to say that I want to thank you all, because we have a great town and these liquor licenses are within small businesses and you've all been a great asset to the town of Hopkinton, and I really appreciate it. I love visiting. I love having lunch and dinner and drinks and whatever else, but it's been great and thank you all. You've just all done a great job.
Okay, anything else, council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, when he, for Pavilion, we don't have to at a later date approve the next license? We would, he will re-advertise and then we'll deal with it at another date when he's ready?
And just to be clear and fair to the applicant, it was filed as a new license. It's just there was something lost in translation and it got advertised and put on tonight as a renewal. So they're making the best of the situation and they're going to take a removal because obviously they have to have a license.
Didn't want to lose it, right.
Right, and then, you know, we'll deal with it down the road.
In following what Councilor Capalvo had said, what is nice is that for year after year after year, we're not, this is a hearing and it's an opportunity for residents to come in and complain that, oh, you know, next door they're loud or their music or they're served liquor late, or all sorts of problems, and we don't hear any of that. So thank you very much for running good establishments and, of course, good food, too.
Okay, motion made, seconded, amended. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
We want a motion to set limit on liquor licenses.
So we voted on the amendment?
Correct.
Now we'll vote on the main motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
We already have.
I'm sorry, we'll vote on the main motion.
As amended, yeah.
Not amended.
Main motion as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to set limit on liquor licenses, class A two, class BV limited one, class BV six, class D one.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you took out Lindbrook, right?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
Yep. Okay, fixuling license renewals, open a hearing on renewal of the following fixuling licenses. Brick Oven Restaurant, 209 Main Street, Captain Dave Seafood, Alton Gladford Road, Duncan Donuts, Main Street, Fenner Hill Country Club, Wheel Lane, Hope Valley, Holy Cow, Main Street, Hopkinton, Lindbrook Golf Course.
New renewal, new renewal.
Okay, I'll strike that. Lucky House Restaurant, Main Street, Ashway, Mom Pa's Country Cooking, Mom Pa's Country Store, Main Street Pizza, Pavilion Steakhouse, Pete's Grocery, Spring Street Market, Wes's Bakery, West's Bakery, West's Bakery, and Woodville, excuse me, Wood River Golf on Woodville Alton Road.
Motion to grant renewal to the licenses, subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes current prior to issue.
Seconded.
Okay.
Also, Lindbrook is out.
Yes.
Not included.
So we don't have to...
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, all.
What's on audience?
Thank you.
Please, probably, yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn as licensing board and reconvene this council.
Still move.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda, open the town council meeting minutes of October 7th, 2013, accept the following report, town clerk. I need to pull the minutes from the 7th.
Motion to approve the town clerk's report.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's see here. I just need to pull page, on the meeting minutes of October 7th. Right at the end of the first paragraph, I guess, I wasn't so sure that I was in favor of, I guess, a study to, for $25,000, for an engineering study for that, for that road for Die Hill. So I don't know, Lisa, if we can...
How about we just direct it to last night?
Yeah, that'd be great. You know, I think I know what needs to be done and I don't know that a study's going to warrant anything different, so thank you.
I'm not going to pull anything. I don't know if I talked about the Atrey School principal or the fact that it was the two principals in, I mean, the principal for Hopkinton, but I'll let it go. I don't know if that's the correct wording, but it's a small point and I haven't seen it, haven't reviewed the tape, because all those thoughts are going through our minds, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve town council meeting minutes of October 7th with the adaption.
I have a couple of questions, corrections.
Oh, sorry.
Is it Cardoza or Cardozo?
Cardozo.
Because everyone in here is Cardoza with an A.
Oh, I thought it was Cardoza.
I noticed that and I wasn't sure because I had...
Well, they kept saying Cardozo.
I thought it was an O.
I thought it was an O, but more often it's an A.
So you can check and then decide what to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. One other correction?
I think it was zero.
I don't know. Keep calling. Yeah, zero, no. Okay. I stand corrected. On page 10, 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 lines up from the bottom, not including the bold face, it says she, they, were chastised.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
What does that mean? She something.
How about they?
They were.
Or get rid of the she?
Yeah.
Okay. I think other than that, I am happy.
Okay, probably.
Okay, try that again. Motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of October 7th with changes.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. First, public forum. Anyone wishing to be heard out there? Okay?
Any.
No one?
I've asked them before.
I'm on the agenda.
He's on the agenda.
Completely irrelevant. We need someone to speak in public forum. You're it.
I've got nothing.
If you change your mind, you let us know.
Just let us know. We have a second one, just in case you have other things to say.
All right, next on the agenda, folks, town council president report. November 2nd, this past Saturday, I met with our illustrious superintendent Barry Ritchie at the school to go over initial budget discussions and whatever else the district was up to, possible workshop on issues to address in the upcoming year, and then just the council president year and year in observation. So first, I'll just take up a couple points that I walked away with, with my meeting with Barry. It was myself, Joe Reddish, and Tom from Charlestown, the chairman of the school committee. And it was a lively discussion. Couple things that I'll relay to the group and to the audience. Barry wanted us to know that they solidified a oil contract for fuel oil in the district, which we're able to take advantage of. We can kind of piggyback off of the district. I talked to the manager, Bill McGary, and we've already, we are already under contract for our fuel, I think at six cents over market. The district was five cents over market, so he just wanted us to be aware that we could piggyback off of them for that. The support staff contract, I guess, was extended for two years with no issues. There was a reduction in longevity and a buyback for health. And one of the cost-saving items that he seems to be focused on is the $750,000 grant, which is a 75-25 split for LED lighting for the school district, so. So they're working on trying to, I guess, save some money somewhere. The other items I'll bring up under the omnibus, I think they're pretty important, that we'll tackle under my list, so. Second is possible workshop on issues to address the upcoming year. I kind of was thinking about this, like, what I wanted to do was see if the council was okay with it, kind of have a workshop, basically go over what we've accomplished in the first year of our town and then where we want to go for the second half, complete, you know, anything that we want to kind of tackle. So I don't know if the council's agreeable to that. It wouldn't probably be a long meeting, but I don't know what you guys think about that.
Can we send you our ideas? I don't know if, I don't think that would be an open meeting's problem.
Well, I just want to know whether you think it's warranted enough to meet, you know, a one-night time?
Yeah, I think it is important because...
I think there's a lot that we've accomplished in a year, and I thought of four or five things, and Bill, I'm sure, can come up with many more, because he's into it every day. And just where we want to go from here, do we want to, whatever.
I think it's a good idea before the budget, too.
Yeah.
Before we get into the budget cycle, I think that would be really wise.
Yep.
That way, we know what we're going, what is first on our list as we go into the budget.
You know what we could do if you think there's time? We have a special council meeting where we're going to do interviews. We could do it at the end of that, because the interviews, people are busy and you only get so many.
Lisa, when did we figure that one out?
25th, 6:30, I believe, was the...
This month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
I think that's excellent. I would like to do that.
You guys want to do it? Is that okay after that?
I think we need agenda items to fulfill an open meeting.
Yeah, how do we... Will you work it up? We'll be okay with that?
No, you won't have to have agenda items.
It's a workshop, right?
Yeah, because we're not going to really get into topics. We're going to bring up topics that we need to discuss.
Yeah, discuss issues and stuff like that. I'll come up with...
Budgetary issues, that's it.
You'll be all right.
Okay, great. Thanks, folks. And then, as far as the year in observations, you know, I just wanted to, again, reiterate that, you know, if you guys have anything you want to put on the agenda, my door's always open, just make sure that the topic is, you know, concerns of town, obviously, and you're prepared to vent it out fully, so that's it.
I have a question for you. The contract that the superintendent just done, that was one that wasn't really up, that they just did it ahead of time to button it up, just in case the budgets get failed again, so they lock in...
Yeah, he didn't specify that. He didn't specify that, but yeah.
Right? That's what we're all thinking.
That could be, that could be.
Okay.
Yeah, anyways, a very lively meeting. Anyway, I'll tell you more about it as we get into our last item under the omnibus. So that's all I have, folks, thank you. Next on the agenda is the town manager report.
Thank you. Just very briefly, October 23rd, we had our department head staff meeting at the Hopkinton Police Department. All town department heads or their designees attended, and we discussed pending department and townwide issues, and we reviewed the status of those matters that were selected by town council members as this year's fiscal annual goals, to basically ensure that they're currently being addressed and they didn't slip through the cracks or have been successfully completed to date. Same date, met with town planner Jim Lampfear, along with Dave Westcott and Nancy Latender of Mason and Associates in the town hall council chambers. We again discussed the timetable and methodology to be used for the complete rewriting and updating of the town zoning ordinances, and we plan to meet as needed and have Dave Westcott personally update the council and the zoning board and the planning board on a periodic basis. Again, this morning, Jim Lampfear and Brad Ward met with Dave Westcott and Nancy Latender just to finalize matters, so that's active and ongoing at this time. Thank you.
Any questions for Bill? I just had one, Bill.
Yes.
Can you, on next agenda, put the Ron McDonald seminar that was put on for the...
30.
Sure.
You know, the one that Ron had given the discussion for, looking for volunteers for the, I forget what the heck it was called, but...
For the flu clinic?
Yeah, the, no, it was actually the pod, the med pod.
Oh, the meds, meds plan, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because he had, he had a lot of volunteers there and we, I think he certainly needs more, based on what he was saying, so anyway.
And it was the same night as Mr. Ritchie was here?
Correct.
Yeah, that might have been after the date that I wrote this report.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, if you could, yeah, because I think that's important, maybe get the word out, so, thank you, Bill.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Bill?
Yes.
The zoning ordinance revision, I'm, I'd be particularly interested in learning more about what the methodology is and what the timetable is and, you know, how it's all going to work. How does he, how does he deal with his project? You know, we've got, we, well, I wouldn't even bother to get into the details, but I'm sure, I guess he's done it before with other communities, but I'd like to hear more about it at some point.
Sure. We did plan to have him make presentations before the town council and the planning board and also the zoning board, just to keep them up to date. I know his initial plan is a timetable of six months before he presents the first draft to the town council. But as far as the actual methodology, he would probably have to come in here and explain that himself, but...
Do you know when that might happen? Did you have a feel for when he was going to do that presentation?
Well, um...
I mean, before, I was thinking before the new year or after the new year?
Oh, I would think it'd be before the new year.
Okay.
When I spoke to him last, I mean, he just signed a notice to proceed, so it's very, very early in the process, but I don't see a problem bringing him in sometime in December to give the status update to the town council and the other boards as to where they stand, so we'll be more than glad to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Anybody have any else to go? Thank you, Bill. Okay, next on the agenda, under all business is to consider and vote upon transferring custody of the perpetual care cemetery accounts to the finance department, with all expenditures therefrom requiring town council approval.
Good.
Yes, Bill?
Just very briefly, at its October 21st meeting, the Hopkinton Town Council discussed the status of the perpetual care cemetery accounts, or the funds of which are in the custody of the town. Because the custody and responsibility of the accounts were not specifically listed on the agenda, a discussion and vote to transfer any responsibilities anywhere was not held. But the general consensus at the time was to place the matter on a future council agenda, which would be tonight. And the reason for placing it on the agenda was that the funds in the custody of the town, at least in my opinion, should be maintained by the finance office. And department heads and even myself really shouldn't be writing checks, that really is jurisdiction of the finance office. Consequently, I spoke with town council president Frank Landoffi, solicitor Patricia Buckley, town clerk Lisa Cook-Martin, and finance director Laura Kenyon on this matter. And Lisa advised that she didn't have any objection to the transfer of the responsibility of the accounts to the finance office. However, she specifically requested that any expenditures require town council approval. And this was mutually agreed upon by all parties. The town council is still required to approve the expenditures from these accounts, only the custody of the accounts would be transferred.
Okay.
With, I was going to say with the math. Mr. President, I, I'm going to disread the motion suggested by our town manager. I move that the Hopkinton Town Council authorize the transfer of responsibility for the management of perpetual care cemetery accounts to the finance department with expenditures requiring town council approval.
Okay. Have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No. Okay.
Good idea.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I have, I have one, because I absolutely think it's a great idea.
How do, you know, what we have, too, is people just appear with a bill, you know, like Mr. Santier, but we have no idea who gave people permission to do the bill, to do the work in order to get paid. How do we handle that?
Well, I have an easy answer to that. I think we should send a notice to all people who have traditionally done their work and said that, that they are expected to check with the town beforehand, before work is done. And also, the other concern that I...
If they expect remuneration.
Compensation, yes.
Right, in other words, what they should be checking with the town for is whether there are funds available, yeah, to do what they're doing.
Does it count?
I'll, I'll, promotion after that.
Well, who should check with, should they check with Bill or should they check with?
They should check with Laura.
Finance office. It's going with Laura.
Take that in the motion, then.
No, I mean, I'll follow with another motion.
All right.
All right. So a motion made, seconded, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion, and this would be the town clerk, because she has the, I assume, I assume she has it.
I don't think you need to do it in motion form. I think, I don't think you want to necessarily limit, you know, somebody may do some work in one of these cemeteries that you consider appropriate and necessary, and they may not have checked with you first, and you may want to pay them for it at some point. I think you unnecessarily, let me put it this way, you unnecessarily limit yourself...
Tie your hands, right.
Yeah, if you make it in motion form.
Yeah.
Just, you know, say it's going to be your policy that you prefer, that if people expect payment, they're going to need to check first, and if they don't, they shouldn't expect payment.
Correct.
I think, in the answer to that, I think what people have to realize is Mr. Santier, I know Ms., and others have, I know one man's deceased, Mr. Wilcox, but I remember in the past, what has happened is, it's like two or three people, I don't know how many people actively do it, maybe Lisa knows, just Mr. Santier's the only one, a president, so. And we never put these things up for bid or anything, it's just been done, but...
It's just...
I think the consensus is fine.
Yes.
We have decided the consensus is adequate.
We're fine, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so that's all set. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Next on the agenda, under new business, is to discuss and consider authorizing the town planner to submit comments to the State Division of Planning as part of an intergovernment review regarding the proposed acquisition by Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management of 29 acres of land in Hopkinton, known as the Fisher property. Mr. Lampfear? Our planner?
Okay, as you know, the DEM is considering purchasing a piece of property in town, 29 acres, and just for your reference, I brought up that.
Can you move it out some, darling?
Yeah. Now, as part of, the DEM is seeking federal funds to do this, and as part of that process, there's an intergovernmental review process that takes place, where they want input from the chief elected officials or their designee, okay, on, to answer six questions, which I provided you in your packet there. I submitted this to the council because I wanted, I didn't want to be the only person in town that knew about this in advance, okay? And I didn't feel as though I really wanted to substitute my viewpoint for, to answer those questions, I wanted the council to do it. So, here we are tonight. I can certainly give you my opinion on the property or answer any questions you have about it. I gave you some facts in your packet. The property is, this is not the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, but it's a map I wrote because it tells me who owns all of these parcels in green around the subject property, which is here. The compre, the first question the state is asking me is, is it consistent with all state, local, and area plans? And the facts that I present to you is that the subject parcel on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan says residential. It is also zoned RFR 80, which is residential, okay? Now, I don't, I don't necessarily think that's a defining, uh, uh, factor here, because one cannot anticipate what properties anyone is intending to buy going forward, including DEM, we don't know. Um, so, it's unrealistic to say a future land use map is not, doesn't envision this, so we can't do it. You can't make a future land use map that envisions all future scenarios, so, so I wouldn't necessarily let that, um, overly influence my decision here. The second question the state is asking is, does it duplicate or need to be coordinated with other projects? And I just noted in, in here that the DEM owns a lot of property around this right now. They own property to the south here, that's DEM. This is DEM as well. DEM and Audubon owns a, a lot of property in this area. The sensitive area, environmentally sensitive, that's another question they asked us here. You have, uh, Asheville Pond down here, you have Blue Pond, Long Pond, El Pond, Winchett Pond, Yago Pond. It's a very sensitive, environmentally sensitive area. I think acquiring this piece of property would serve to connect these two properties, which are owned by DEM, which would enable them to put trails through there if they so desired, uh, or whatnot. So, as, as far as the other questions, would it contribute to the, to balance development patterns in the town and service delivery? I would say it, it would. When you look at the town as a whole, I think it's very well balanced. I think you have a, a pretty good recreational area in this, in here, um, and you have your development in the two village centers. So, I think that overall, on a townwide basis, I think it helps to balance the development. And, uh, and as far as service delivery, I think it enhances the, uh, public enjoyment of recreational resources. So, I think it enhances service delivery in that respect. Any other aspect your agency considers important? I'll leave that to you. I know that one common thought when, when, um, agencies such as the state think about buying land, the first thing that goes off is, how much taxes are we gonna be losing, how much is coming off the rolls? And it's my understanding that, uh, there's approximately $1,800 in taxes. I think the property is in farm forest and open space, which reduces the taxes on anyway. It's about $1,800, uh, taxes. Um, however, with 29 acres, if you were to put, let's say roughly do the math, two, two acres a house, let's say conservatively, you got 10 houses there. At $12,000 a child, there's $120,000 we'd be paying for, for school, so, I, I wouldn't be too concerned...
It's actually 16, Jim.
Isn't it 18?
Well, it's, it's going up every year, it's going up every year, so...
Isn't it 18 yet?
Whatever it is, multiply it by 10, and it, and it really makes that $1,800 look pale.
Right.
So, um, you know, as a planner, I, again, I don't want to substitute my judgment. If I was to answer those six questions and did not give this to the council, I would tend to be supportive of it. But, uh, again, I didn't want to substitute my judgment for that of yours, so...
The only question I have, Jim, and I'll just start, and then I'll move to my left, is, it's a private sale. Why, why do they need input from, from the, from the council, I guess, I'm just at a loss as to...
Because they're a state agency.
And it's, and it's federal funds or state funds and...
Yeah, but they don't, if we say we don't like it, what, they're still gonna go through it?
They're not gonna care.
They're not gonna care anyway, right?
Well...
No, well, you know, you do...
No, it matters, you'd be surprised.
Yeah, you do have an opportunity to...
I guess I'm just wondering, you know, private sales typically don't come before us, I guess.
Yeah. Please do, Michelle.
Come up and introduce yourself, please, thanks.
Hi, I'm Michelle Sheehan from the DEM, and we don't normally go before towns for approval when we purchase a piece of property. It is because we're getting funding. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service requires that we go through an intergovernmental review process to make sure that there's no opposition, um, and that's coordinated through statewide planning, and so I'm sure you got that packet.
Yeah.
Um, so they coordinate that response.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you got thumbs up for me.
So, yes, David, side off.
That's a good question. So, could you, could you tell me, why does DEM want it?
Well, uh, for a couple of reasons. One is, um, as you can sort of see from the back, you know, it does make a nice connection between our existing properties, um, but we do, you know, we go through an internal process, and we, um, have our staff from the Fish and Wildlife, um, division go out and take a look at the property, and so they've done the site visit and seen that, you know, from their perspective, it's a habitat type that is, that is, um, worth preserving. Um, it has, you know, several rare and endangered species, um, capable, that are capable of its, um, it's capable of supporting. So, the habitat, and then just like management-wise, as DEM as a whole, we're trying to just sort of solidify our boundaries to make management easier, and so filling in the holes and the gaps and making connections so that, you know, it just eases that, you know, encroachments and that sort of thing, so those are...
Very good, thanks.
I have three questions, actually.
Sure.
Um, one, and Jim, you answered one, I wanted to know if it was contiguous, um, with those parcels are contiguous, and now that really does make a great deal of sense, I think, for you. Is it, you've also, the yellow piece of property in the middle, James? Is that now a sort of landlocked by DEM? Who owns the property that in the middle? The one in the middle? It's the yellow, if you make the top part green...
Oh, oh, this here?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are privately owned.
Okay, and so DEM would have to talk to them too, since they're going to basically circle them?
Well, um, that's the subject parcel right there.
Right, correct.
This, this map may help you a little bit. It's, uh, though everything in green is DEM owned, and everything in brown is, um, owned by, I think it's either TNC or Audubon.
Oh, okay.
And so, yeah, DEM property does essentially, will encircle this, these are, these are still privately owned parcels.
Okay, and, um, you would of course talk to them, since you're going to basically circle them? If it's not nature conservancy or something?
I mean, this is the subject parcel, and so they've probably already been spoken to?
Spoken to, okay.
Because, you know, there is fronting, I, I rock bill.
Right, and that was my other question, is that this is Fish and Wildlife, and I wanted to make sure that if we do get this particular parcel, that it is open for fish, wildlife hunting?
Yes.
It's connect, it has a connecting point to the river, doesn't have a connecting point to the, to the river?
No.
To Winchett?
No. It doesn't, it's, there's no water on the property whatsoever, no wetlands, no water bodies.
And it has no connection to it either?
Uh, no, no access.
Which would be another recreation thing that I'm interested in.
Right, no, we don't have any, any frontage on Winchett. But, but yes, actually, the, the funding source, your hunting question, the funding source is through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, is the wildlife restoration through the Pittman Robin, Pittman Robertson, which requires, um, active, agri, um, active recreational use?
Oh, good.
If, if it is appropriate, and in this case it certainly is, so there will be...
So, so they can fish, they can hunt?
Right, yeah, fishing isn't applicable, but yeah, hunting for sure, yeah.
I think you should get another piece of property that goes to the pond.
We would love to have access to Winchett, we've been trying.
Thank you, keep trying.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sylvia?
Well, is any, I've walked all around through these areas, and I, I don't know if, if everyone here has. I mean, the, the land is beautiful, you've got cliffs and, I mean, it's just, it's magnificent. So, um, I, I would, uh, if, if the town couldn't have it, then I would certainly want DEM to have it. It's absolutely magnificent, pro, land around there.
It is nice.
That'd be wonderful.
Scott?
I don't know if I've been to this site in the whole, in town in my life. Uh, the only thing I say is that I have no problem with DEM having it, but the political reality is we have a, a number of people in town who feel that we've saved enough land already. I don't necessarily agree with that type of thinking, but, uh, I'm sure when people see the paper, they might pay a lot.
Sure, and again, I think a good argument, and it's something that DEM always really tries to, um, press upon, you know, communities, particularly communities where there is a lot of conservation land, is we're not really, we're not really actively looking for additional management areas. We're just looking to...
Yeah, combine them, I mean...
Yeah, make connections and square off our existing boundaries. Again, as I said, to each management concerns, um, so there probably is a finite number of properties out there that, that are left to conserve by DEM, so it's, um...
I think it's excellent to be able to connect, to make them contiguous, it makes it a lot easier for everyone. That's great.
I just had one question, I, I guess it's zoned RFR 80 right now? Okay, does it have any kind of open space component?
It's, it's, they're in farm forest and open space, but...
Okay, yeah, I saw that on the tax form.
Yeah.
I, I guess, how, how does that intertwine, I guess? I know it's zoned RFR 80, but, so does, I guess I'm confused as to, it has, does it has an open space component? How, how does that work, Jim?
Well, that program is a program that anyone that has a certain amount of acres can apply for, and what it does is, it reduces their taxes and helps to keep the property in an open space use.
Okay.
For their own use.
Which, yeah, which benefits the town from not being developed.
I see.
But a property owner can opt out of that at any point, too.
Oh, okay.
It expires after a certain number of years, or if they want to opt out prematurely, they can pay to get out of it. So, i- it, it's not permanently protected open space right now.
Okay, all right, thanks, I appreciate the explanation, okay.
A move that we authorize the town planner to submit positive comments regarding the state division of planning, um, as part of the intergovernmental review process regarding the 29 acres, the Fisher property, the 29 acres of the Fisher property in Hopkinton.
Second.
Okay, motion needs second, any more discussion, folks? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, have a wonderful time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under new business is to set a hearing date for petition of zoning ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance text amendment, zoning map amendment, and comprehensive community plan amendment filed by Vincent Nakarado Esquire from Megawatt Energy Solutions and Bank Street Holdings LLC. Mr. Nakarado?
Evening. As it states on your agenda, this is a application for zone change and comprehensive, uh, land use, uh, map change that, uh, I have filed on behalf of the owner of the property, which is Bank Street Holdings, and the less C, Megawatt Energy Solutions for a, uh, the construction of a solar array system. This is a property that is, uh, sometimes referred to as, uh, the gravel bank in, uh...
Whistling.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, tonight, the only thing before you is to set a, a date for the public hearings. Well, public hearing, everything's heard at one time.
But the planning board hasn't heard it yet?
It has not, yeah. In fact, I was just talking with Jim about whether, uh, it is a, a public hearing before the planning board or just, uh, something for a, a recommendation. Like, I, I honestly, I, I can't remember. I, I seem to think that you, a public hearing is required before, before the planning board, but that's something I'll have to straighten out with, um, Mr. Lampier.
Okay, thanks. Lisa, when, uh, can we set...
Well, dated on October 29th, we're required to hold a hearing within 65 days, so you would have until, if you go strictly by your regularly scheduled meetings, it would be by December 16th, and then you have to render a decision within 45 days of hearing. So, the last time for date you can get would be December 16th. Now, I don't think the people in the planning board, they're general, or, 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 remember, I think?
Jim, are you gonna hear this matter?
What's the story?
Not, not, no, that's enough.
In December.
In December, we'll approve it.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
So, you're gonna hear it the first Wednesday in December, so if we hear it...
The 16th.
16th.
16th, that would be acceptable. That gives you enough time to get us information.
Okay, great.
Mr. Nakarado, how's that fare for the applicant?
Uh, the applicant is looking for the earliest possible date. It's not that we're in a huge rush, but National Grid sets deadlines on these things, and, uh, so, when they have to be all approved and when they have to be built, and we're rushing against the clock, so...
Well, Lisa, let me ask you, what would be the earliest date that this council could hear it? Because it's gonna be advertised... Because it's gotta be advertised at times. The earliest, yeah, it has not even been prepared, the letter notice has to go out. I think the earliest you could do it would be December 2nd.
The planning board will meet December 4th.
Well, they would need to, Mr. Nakarado, the onus would be on him to get them to hold a special hearing, basically, or... Is it important enough to you, then, to, for us to try and do that?
It would be, but then again, uh, you know, trying to set special meetings are, are not easy with volunteer boards, yeah.
And we can't guarantee that, what happens, so...
I'd hate to set a date and then miss it, so...
All right, well, then, stay with the 16th.
Yeah, okay.
December's a bad month for planning things.
All right, well, you guys will meet, and then we'll, we'll set our date for the 16th of December, I guess, then.
Yeah.
Although the planning board's been pretty quiet for the last couple of months.
Yeah, but it depends on the air weather.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, once you get into Thanksgiving and, you get into holidays, it's, it's, it's tough to get a special meeting together, yeah.
I'm gonna have to check in and see if we have to have a, a public hearing before the planning board or not.
I thought it was always just a, a recommendation. You can check, but I'm pretty sure it's just a recommendation.
Yeah, but it's a little big. I know before we adopt the comp plan, the board has to have a, a public hearing.
Sure.
And that, but it might not for, for amendment to a plan, you're, you're correct.
So, 16th?
So, it looks like the 16th, I guess.
Okay.
And we'll hear from the planning board before that, so we'll have our information. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nakarado, appreciate it. Okay, 16. Okay, next, under new business, a topic we all love. Discuss aside on the Charro omnibus agenda items. I've got, I've got a few, um, that were uncovered at the meeting with Barry Ritchie, so I'll, I'll go last.
Well, why did you tell them? No, do us right now.
Because there may be some of the things we...
Sure. Some pretty, pretty good ones, um, really, the, the main, main item that, um, we discussed that, that day was to, were the towns in favor of removing a clause in the Charro Act that basically stated that the, um, I forget the exact clause, but the, the child would be matriculating within the town that they live in.
Oh, that one.
So, it, we, we kinda came to the conclusion that maybe, you know, obviously there are pros and cons. So, that, that's gonna be something I think that the school committee's gonna bring up.
Let them bring it up.
They're gonna deal with it, um, but I just wanted to, um, let you know that that was a, kind of a hot button issue...
Oh, yeah.
That day. You know, in some respects, I think it makes sense, if somebody's living close by, you know, why have to deal with the, the long bus ride and what, and whatnot, but when you have two kids in two different schools, it gets dicey, but, uh, so that was, that was really one that I walked away with. Let's see, the, um, housing aid moratorium ends on June 30th of next year. Now, obviously, we don't want that to be, to be continued, that's huge. It's, it's money that goes to the district, um, and it hasn't been going there because of the moratorium. So, I've gotta get more clarification if we need to do anything, or we just let a sleeping dog lie on that. So, that's really, um, more revenue for the district that would help us all, especially Hopkinton. So, that was one, one of, another good thing.
Is that something you're gonna bring up that night?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Exactly, so...
Because the reps will be there.
Oh, yeah, yep. And, um, the, the other thing, too, is we were kinda discussing initially on the budget, was the teach program. Uh, obviously, money, uh, was set aside last year and this year. Each year was $200,000. The teach program, which basically incented certain teachers, uh, gave them like bonuses, I guess, depending on their, um, level of achievement. And I found out the reason why, I, I was kinda confused as to why, um, that, that program wasn't successful. And they, basically, the, the union folks that were at the meeting, there was one particular, a school committee member, that's a union member. He said, "When you're in the union, everybody should be on a level playing field." So, I, I finally figured out why they don't like that particular program, because some are incented more than others, and that's not good if they're in the same step, step rate. So, anyway, that, that money's gonna be returned, it's in a special account, according to Barry Ritchie, for the first allocation of $200,000, and then there's another, this year of $200,000, so that's money that hopefully will be used to offset the budget, um, so that was good news. There was a, a discussion, and I'm not sure, um, well, anyway, I'll just, it's something that kinda, I almost fell back in my chair, but, there was a, uh, the issue came up of impact fees used to, to offset some safety costs within the towns' schools. Now, obviously, we pay a lot of money that, uh, for, for Charro, and, and we expect the schools to be, to be repaired. It was brought up at, at the meeting that each respective town would be responsible for their own repairs. And, 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 and a percentage of the impact fees would be used for that, so I, you know, Henry Oppenheimer came out and said, you know, it's, it's against state law to have that happen, I said, well, that's fine.
Who brought it up?
Bill Day.
Of course.
So, I said, well, jeez, okay, if it's against state law, then that's fine, we'll leave it at that, and so, but he, he proceeded to ask me after the meeting if we're interested in doing that, and I, I kinda looked at him, crossing...
Are you nuts?
So, anyway...
And you wanna deregionalize, that's what he means?
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, look at that.
Yes, so, anyway, uh, and then, you know, like I mentioned before, they're pursuing a grant for $750,000 for LED lighting around the district. They're working with the architectural firm, uh, now, and it's, what's in its early stages, so that's a, a positive. Again, the support staff was extended for two years, the support staff contract. They have raises of zero, one and, one and a quarter for the two years, um, reduction in longevity and buyback, so, uh, anyway. Let's try to think, what else? And, oh yeah, Barry did mention, um, and I'll bring this up again when we have the omnibus, is the, um, he said he's gonna, he's in the process of doing a review for the school psychologists, uh, you know, maybe the district has too many. He's, he's still in the early stages of that, so he's looking, uh, I get, I guess, at certain areas of the budget to try and figure out, uh, how we can produce a level funded budget for us, so, um, that's all I have.
Uh, got a question, for the first one you brought up, the, about that clause?
Yeah.
Are you bringing, are you asking for that to be on the agenda, or are you gonna let them put it on the agenda?
Yeah, what happened at the meeting was, um...
You're, are you, do you want it to go onto the agenda?
The omnibus agenda?
No, yes.
Okay.
You weren't asking for it, right?
No.
Okay, wanted to make sure...
Okay, wanted to make sure Lisa didn't send that over to them.
No, no, no.
I'm gonna confirm when we're done.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, at the end of that meeting, I guess Bill Day's gonna bring it forward to the, on their agenda, and they're gonna vet it out, and then, I guess if it comes down to where it's approved, then each, each respective town will have an option to weigh in on that, certainly. So, anyway, I just thought that was an interesting discussion. So, that is mine, I guess, other than just, you know, I got a snapshot in the budget. He's thinking initially now, because of contractual raises and some workers' comp increases, the budget is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher right now. He's looking to, I guess, to get a level-funded budget, so I made some suggestions on how to do that, and hopefully he'll, he'll do that, so that's just an early snapshot of what.
By ringing, you know how you. That's all the budget needs is ringing.
Tweaking, so anyways, so that's a quick snapshot of what happened and some of the agenda items I'll bring up at the omnibus. David, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll start. The teach program, I have three things here, three, four things, teach program, absolutely. We've gotta do something about that, the teachers don't seem to like it, the union doesn't seem to like it, the people of this, this town, you know, at least in Richmond, possibly, also don't like it, and yet it persists. And they don't, they allocate two hundred thousand dollars for this program every year, they don't spend anything more than roughly sixty-five or seventy-five thousand dollars of that, the rest of it goes into their surplus, it really is a sore point as far as I'm concerned, and so that's one thing I'd like to bring up. I don't have, number two, I don't have any problem with moving students to the closest school. And, I mean, we move them to the middle school, and that is, you know, that's, if they can go to the middle school, they go to the high school as one, I don't see any reason, and I think it would be a cost-saving measure, especially when you consider they got Richmond kids right across the, right across the river in Hope Valley, they have to go over to Richmond, you've got Shannick kids in Charleston that, and Richmond, the Richmond kids go up to Richmond, and the Charleston kids go to Charleston, when Charleston school's only two miles away. So, it certainly seems like a viable idea, or something that should be discussed, and especially as a cost-saving measure. It's not gonna, and maybe it should be voluntary, maybe the parents should say, "Hey, I'd like to have my kid go to Charleston School, I don't want the kid being trucked fifteen miles up the road to Richmond, or twelve miles up the road to Richmond, on a bus for half an hour, when he can, he or she can be brought to Charleston."
Guys, let's turn around to what the agenda item is, which is your list.
That's my list, okay, not discussed, okay, but anyhow, I like to, I like to, I like to see that discussed. There's a, there's a lot of grief being given to Hope Valley School, and I can understand why, because it's not handicapped accessible on the second floor. I think the school department should look into, A, either putting an elevator in that, and it's gonna be expensive, that's right, or just expanding the school outward, and I don't know, using the second floor for storage, but Hope Valley School's been taking a beating. I love that school up there, I think it's wonderful for the community, but, you know, every, every time I turn around, somebody from the school department's complaining about the second floor, and the fact that it's an old building, and that we have two schools, so, that's where I come from, that's, that's all I've got.
My thanks, David, Barbara, you have a list?
I have, actually, I have two of them. One is that, one of the things we discussed last year with their budget issues is that they have a tendency to do conservative budgeting, which is way above the amount of money they need per year.
And it's liberal.
Very, no, it's conservative budget, a conservative budget means you budget more than you think you need, rather than liberal. No, it's liberal budgeting, but it's a conservative, if you're being conservative, if I think it's gonna cost me a thousand dollars for fuel, I say two thousand, that's conservative, because we think it's.
Overestimating.
It's overestimating, so maybe overestimating is a better word. But I would like them to discuss the overestimation on the budget and how they are doing, because I know they are, Mr. Ritchie said in the meeting, that they were going over all the conservative budgeting, the overestimation, and I'd like to know where they stand, and if they could come up with anything they've already discovered is overestimated, and they can, like the psychologist. The second one is, the teach program is interesting, but the other part of that program is the administrative portion, and the administrators seem to love it, so that particular part of the union still has twenty-four thousand that they are happy to take, and that part of the budget of the teach program is still in, it still works. I would like to know whether they're planning on dumping that side, not just the teach program for the teachers, for the certified staff.
Are you saying that the teach program for administrators?
Yeah, there's a program for administrators, and that, as far as my understanding, is the administrators think it's great fun. So, if they're getting rid of the teach program for the certified staff, what are they doing with the administrative portion of, especially because of the teach program, and especially because the administration, if anything, is, as far as I'm concerned, fat.
Okay, so that's Barbara's two items, okay, Sylvia?
Let's see, it's the same old thing, past, present, and future budgets, which then allows you to talk about surpluses and all that stuff, and the campus twenty-ten financials, are my two items.
Okay, great, I think they've wrapped up that, but.
And I know what you want, which we support.
I got, I listed eight things, but anyway.
Well, Scott, let's.
Be reasonable.
First of all, I would like to have an outside management study, and more or less, put it aside because the council president wanted me to do more research, I did end up talking to somebody from R I P E C, and I gotta really gauge the sentiment on the school committee. It's, it's a really vast topic, that you really need a lot of information, and if this, plus, we can't force the school committee to implement it anyway, so I really gotta see if there's support from the other councils, as well as, more importantly, six people on the school committee. Otherwise, just let it go, and apparently, they put it on the agenda, and I didn't show up. I don't remember, they definitely confirmed it was gonna be on months ago, but anyways. The other things are, other ways of financing education under the property tax. This is, I put this on last year, I think that a lot of states are looking at other ways to finance education other than the property tax, and I don't think we've ever addressed that seriously in Rhode Island, whether it be through income taxes, or sales tax, or lottery, or those type of things, so that, you know, pit all these small towns against each other, and I, and also.
Do you think that forum, Scott?
Yes, I do, because I think what we have to ask ourselves, and I'm gonna bring it in my other list, is, are we willing to provide some leadership in the state through the Rowland Association of School Committees and Rowland League of Cities and Towns, to have those groups, which we pay dues to, to actually take the lead in that group, and maybe get some legislation passed, and probably a special study committee, a commission in the state to look at those issues. Other states are trying to look outside the box, other, to finance education other than the property tax, because what you continually having is pitting all these towns against each other. Let me read the other list, and this is kind of a loaded question, but I think it's relevant, and that's the future of schools, the two elementary schools in Hopkinton. I was debating whether or not we should have it on the agenda, but if they're gonna put in removing the Charro Act as far as sending kids to the nearest school, maybe that should be on the agenda. I really would like to know where people stand on the future of schools in Hopkinton, and particularly Hope Valley. Right now, Richmond couldn't absorb that, because Richmond's the biggest elementary school, but in the future, if, for example, they wanted to do away with Hope Valley School, would they be inclined to expand the campus in Richmond and transport the kids from Hope Valley or over there? Once you change the Charro Act, that leaves the door open for the future, not only right now, even if it's not feasible right now to send kids to Richmond in the future, that would open the door for the school committee and others to maybe expand.
So, what's the agenda item, two schools or not?
No, I mean, what is their position on the future of schools in Hopkinton, the two elementary schools?
Okay, all right, so that's one, all right, so that's three.
And the other one is, another thing is to work with other regional school districts and strengthen our clout in the state. You know, the thing is, networking is very important in politics, but we have never, as a body, and I know when we testified at the State House, none of the other regional school districts showed up, but we have to have at least some networking with Bristol Warren, Gloucester Gloss, to Exeter West Greenwich, as well as Charro, to try to strengthen our clout in Providence, because it's really ridiculous. We get mowed over, we're probably being mowed over even if we're united, but we're not even united now, we're not even talking. There's no reason that the officials, and I'm not saying all of them, but the council presidents or designated person in regional school district, people, as well as the school committee, should get down and say, this is a legislation that impacts regional school districts, we don't even network. Networking is important in politics, it's networking important in everything, business and whatever. I think we should put that on the agenda.
Okay, that's four, okay.
And I don't know if you wanna put it on, because more or less Barry Richard already gave us the idea is the Career and Technical Training Center, which is still in litigation, I don't know if that should be put on just to, he wants to say any updates, and I also have the Charro Act Committee, which I'm, I'm a little leery of because I'm concerned what can happen down the road if they do change the redistricting thing, and I understand the logic behind it, but what does that mean if we open that crack? What does that mean to the future of Hope Valley Elementary School in particular? And that's, that's enough.
Well, I think what they, what I walked away with at the meeting was that they wanted to remove that one sentence in the act. Tom Gents will not open the Charro Act for amendment, I know that, so it will never happen, so, anyway.
He won't open it for what?
For anything other than this one sentence, he was, he was in agreement with one sentence removing, but not the act itself, so, anyway.
You know, the thing is, in politics, you have to compromise and strike a deal, but I think people have to be very leery about the sentiment about two schools in Hopkinton, and Hope Valley geographically is very close to Richmond, and they would seem to have more land in that area, so I think people gotta be very leery about changing that sentence. One sentence, one word means a lot in law.
We'll see how it goes, they're gonna present it to the school committee, see how it goes. So, you have your list, Lisa?
I have a list, I'm not quite certain if I have anything that you wanted, because yours is more and more.
You're more broad, yeah.
So, I can review what I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the teach program, and with that, let's see, I think what we wanna do is also have the district plans in regards to the administration portion.
The administrative portion, the teach for the certified and the teach for the administrative portion.
Future schools in Hopkinton, specifically the two elementary schools, and that could include perhaps the, I don't know if it should include the fact that Hope Valley Elementary School is not handicapped accessible, in relation in regards to.
I mean, that's a, that's a sensitive subject, I mean, the school is already costing the district a lot of money in repairs, and that, in my opinion only, you know, the more we bring up on, on cost, they're gonna start throwing eggs at us.
But, 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 well, anyway, I'll tell you after the meeting, our costs.
Oh, I know.
Are not any higher than what they already put into Charleston's elementary school, you know?
Just listening to that.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm just gonna list how they, how they came up, that would be the teach program, and I'll combine it with what you have. The matriculation aspect about the Charro Act, Hope Valley and the elementary school handicap accessibility, budgetary issues in regards to overestimating expenditures, district plans, I worked on through that, past, present, and future budget budgets, campus twenty-ten financials, outside management study, other ways to finance education other than through the property tax, future of the schools, the two elementary schools in Hopkinton, working with other regional school districts to strengthen our position of, of state and state level, or do you want that to stay in the legislation, how, or just.
I mean, the state, the state level networking, and also whether or not we, the League of Cities and Towns could be more beneficial to us in the Rowland Association of School Committees.
Career and technical center update, training center update, Charro Act revision committee.
I was gonna delete the career and technical update.
I think we have too many things on the list, we're not gonna get that.
And we don't need the Charro Act Revision Committee.
We really don't.
No, it'd be something specific.
Well, the only thing that I think I listed, I don't know if you got it, was that housing aid moratorium.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just delete the thing about the career and technical thing, I just threw that out, just, just so they would, it would be covered in case you wanted to give an update, but it's not necessary, so I'd strike that.
Housing aid moratorium.
And the act revision committee, that's not, we didn't want that on.
No.
No.
The, I agree with Sylvia that overestimating the budget is the more clear term, however, what they're calling it is the conservative, the overly conservative budgeting process.
That's something they want to do?
No, that's what Barry Ritchie's calling it, he said, "We're looking at the overly, the conservative budgeting process, and where are those line items that have been too conservatively budgeted?" But that's what they're calling.
Okay.
It actually, in math, in finance, it actually works, if you're conservative, you budget more.
I'll work on something like that.
Yeah, when you, yeah.
Okay, so, I think we've got our list, Lisa? We'll try, we'll try and tackle.
But, but, but the overestimation part, that can come in in the past, present, and future, because that's where I always do my little graphs, so you don't have to have two items.
I don't think we, I don't think we need a motion on these.
No, it's a consensus.
Nope, it's a consensus, yeah, everybody's got their list, okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Lisa, next on the agenda is the second public forum, anyone out there?
Then you left.
Chief Palmer, how are you? Okay, that's that, I guess I need a motion, Scott?
Mr. President, I make a motion at the Hopkins Town Council Meeting adjourned and honor the Boston Red Sox for winning the World Series.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
That's a very notable.
Yes, second, second.
Okay, so, motion made in second, all those in favor?